Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allison, could we get a roll call, please?
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda, we are going to have a really special presentation this evening, and this would be Santa Claus. So Ray, would you like to come down up front?
Is this the last meetings of the year?
Possibly.
You're going to take the time off?
He did not want this tonight.
I know. He didn't want to have any, you know, thing, presentation, but Ray, this is key
to the city. You've got to have that. He didn't want, he wanted just a little minimal little something.
But your years of service is August 3, 2011, to December 31, 2018, for Ward 2A.
And he has done an amazing job as the city councillor, and we are really going to miss you.
It's been a fabulous seven and a half years, basically.
And he's always had so much fun. He's always mentioned how he's just had fun being on the city council.
Because I get a perverse enjoyment out of the give and take that we have. But people don't realize that, you know, nights spend the time we breathe. So it's the other times that makes it more fun. There's lots of fabulous memories. I'm going to be replaced by a gentleman sitting in the back room. He's going to have his fun in the front of the sunroof. He's already chastised me, saying, "What'd I get him into?" He'll wind up soon enough. I've had a fabulous time. I'm still going to stay involved with the city on commission or something when they can get appointed. We'll go from there. So thank you.
But one thing, though, as a city councillor, you have really done an outstanding job, because he doesn't just, he doesn't just put in the time for being on the dais or in our, you know, usual meetings. He has spent so much time on social media, getting the facts out there to, you know, to citizens, really getting out, you know, looking at the whole perspective, really trying to be able to correct misinformation. You probably have no idea how many hours you have put in over your years of service on social media, but it's been such a benefit to the city.
I do have to correct you. I do not participate in the social media and the Facebooks and that kind of.
But you used to do Democrat Herald for a long time.
Yes, but I used to do that when they allowed the online commenting, and now I do it basically periodically through Russell's blog.
But he's also been very, he's essential to in our police and fire, you know, police and bond, fire and bond measure. He was very active in any one of our city measures, and that we're very grateful for, putting in a lot of time, even putting in time for the Cumberland Church. Ray has really gone, he has gone above.
We all have our own passions, and I've enjoyed it very much. Thank you.
You have done. But now, here is your sign from the event, Ray. And so I want to make sure, you know, each last couple of years, Ray videotapes while we're on the trolley in fast motion, the whole parade. So it shows everybody participating. So next year, we want you to be, make sure that you're videotaping the parade again.
Well, I honestly haven't looked, because Marilyn took the video I took, and it's at the regular speed, not the fast motion, correct?
Well, it's a lot shorter than it was. And there is fast motion.
Well, as long as you can head it out from dead spots. When we're just sitting there, there's nothing.
That's it.
Yes. And also, we have the City of Albany calling for you.
Challenge point. Cool. Very good. Thank you, thank you.
But no, the thanks is to you and your service to the community.
I'm still going to stay involved as much as I can.
Good. We're glad. Thank you, and thank you again, Ray, so much. We will miss you, but we are going to make sure we keep you involved and busy still. So, okay, let's see. Next, we have the, a couple of proclamations, and this, the first one is the Homeless Persons Memorial Day. This is December 21, 2018. Whereas every member of society, including individuals experiencing homelessness, deserves the dignity of safe, decent, accessible, and affordable housing. And whereas winter poses extreme hardship for inadequately housed, low-income men, women, and children in Albany. And whereas, in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Albany are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all people, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas, remembering those who have died without homes, the cause of ending homelessness remains urgent to prevent such deaths in the future. And whereas, the shortest day of the year has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Health Care for the Homeless Council, and is recognized by cities nationwide. Now therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim December 21, 2018, as Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In Albany, Oregon, in recognizing, in recognition of the people who have died on our streets, in our emergency shelters, and in condemned or abandoned properties under conditions directly related to homelessness, I hereby ask all citizens to take a moment of silence in remembering those who have died homeless, and encourage our citizens to support local efforts to eliminate homelessness here in Albany. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this fifth day of December 2018. So homelessness is probably one of the big topics that was this past election season clear across the nation, and it is something that we know we will never fully ever eliminate homelessness, and, but we always want to strive to be able to reduce the numbers of homelessness. And I'm really proud of what we've done in Albany, and being very proactive and trying to be able to be of service to the homeless, of the goal of getting a roof over their head and not enabling homelessness. So there's, it's an ongoing, continuing, rising homeless problem that we will see, but it's something that we have really done a lot in Albany to be able to help, try to be able to reduce homelessness, and that's a good goal of it for our city to have. So, okay, that. Next, we have another proclamation, and this one is the Year of the Veteran, 2019. Whereas, the military men and women who serve and protect the United States of America come from all walks of life. They are parents, children, grandparents, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, and are an important part of our communities. And whereas, of the 16.1 million living American veterans who served during at least one war, and 5.2 million veterans who served during peacetime, more than 320,000 veterans live in Oregon today. And whereas, the American Legion and Albany Post 10 will both celebrate their 100th birthdays in 2019. And whereas, in the 100 years since World War I, many men and women have returned home after fighting for the freedom of our country with the loss of limbs, sight, hearing, and more. And whereas, despite the physical and mental recovery that many are faced with coming home, veterans are extremely likely to continue serving their community through volunteering with civic organizations. And whereas, our veterans continue to invest and play a vital role in our communities by operating over 2.5 million veteran-owned businesses across the U.S. and over 31,000 in Oregon. Now therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim 2019 as the Year of the Veteran. In Albany, Oregon, in honor of the heroic efforts of our veterans who gave so selflessly to our country through their military service, and who continue to serve and support our communities today. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this fifth day of December 2018. And with that, we do have the commander of American Legion Post 10, here, David Solomon. Did you want to say a few words, David? If you can come to the podium. Except I turned the mic, I forgot to put it back. If you can turn that back, thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Councillor, I want to thank you for this. It is long overdue to be recognized, a hall of our veterans. We have fought for the country. It is 100 years of the American Legion in 2019. It is World War I, 100 years old, as well as your post in Albany is 100 years old. So I wish to thank you very much for recognizing. The veterans will not stop the community help that we do. We feed the homeless on Thanksgiving. We feed them on Christmas Day. And we will do anything we can to support this community. And to all staff, God bless, I'm wearing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, David. Thank you, thank you. You have a wonderful holiday, too. So, yeah. And they have been doing the effort of having, collecting toys for the children, and I think it's December 15 that those will be distributed. And thank you for, you know, being able to support that program and providing toys for the children in our community. So, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, Councillor, let's see, we have next is a couple items under communication, and the first one's accepting Javier Cervantes' resignation from the Human Relations Commission.
Move to accept the resignation letter and send a letter of thank you for service.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. And next is accepting Sharon Edwards' resignation from Parks and Recreation Commission.
Move to accept the resignation and send a letter of thank you.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next, we have some sort of routine connection charges, and this would be over water and sewer. This is going to be a public hearing, so at 7:27 PM, I will open up the public hearing, and the staff have a report on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Over the past year, staff has had a number of discussions with council regarding connection charge policies, and then also the connection charge amount. The attached ordinance amending Title 15 of Albany's municipal code, along with the four resolutions, will implement the decisions that council made at these meetings. So connection charges are a means to ensure that as properties develop, they pay their fair share of infrastructure costs across their frontage, when that infrastructure is already in place and it has been constructed by other people. Albany's capital recovery program, it was established in conjunction with connection charges, and this program provides the framework that allows a developer, the city, even Lennon Benton County, to be able to reimburse a portion of their investment when they've constructed infrastructure that other properties benefit from. What the attached ordinance is doing is it's proposing changes to Title 15.30 of Albany's municipal code. It will remove language that restricts the use of connection charges. The current language requires that connection charges that aren't being used to reimburse developers, they have to be used for infill projects. With the proposed changes to the municipal code, the funds could be considered as general capital reserves in their respective funds, and then they could be evaluated through the city's budget process. Recently, well, I guess a few months ago, we discussed connection charge amounts with council in September. The attached resolutions, they incorporate the connection charge amounts that we discussed during this meeting. I guess one thing I wanted to point out is the connection charges for water and sewer. The current policy includes provision of one service, one water service, one sewer service to the connecting property. This can become an issue at times if there isn't a service available. The city's policy, based on the current resolution, is the city pays to have the service installed, and there are often incidences where the cost to install the service exceeds the amount of connection charges that we collect. So the proposed change to the water and sewer resolutions, it includes two rates listed. There's one rate for properties where there is a service available, and then there's another rate, it's slightly less, for properties when a service isn't available. And then in this case, the properties would be responsible for paying for the actual cost of the service. And I guess that's really all I have for my staff report. I don't know if I can answer questions at this time, or if council needs to deliberate.
Questions? Yeah. Council, have any questions? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Stacy. So this will be a public hearing, then. This is for items 1A through E. They're all sewer and water connection charges. And is there anyone that's wanting to speak on those items?
Mayor, just a quick correction. The resolutions do include connection fees for street and stormwater as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone wanting to speak on those items? Okay. No, with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:31 PM. Councillor, any questions? Or, other words, your first, there's an ordinance on page eight. Would you like?
Just a question. Proper procedure wouldn't be to read these one at a time to approve them?
Yeah. One's an ordinance, so we would need to. Okay. Do you want to read the first reading?
Yes. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title 15.30, Connection Charges, revising language restricting the use of monies raised through connection charges.
Make a motion, the ordinance will be read a second time, and title on that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title 15.30, Connection Charges, revising language restricting the use of monies raised through connection charges.
Make a motion for approval of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question.
Uh huh.
What's the emergency? Is there, or is it just to get it done quickly?
I don't think there's an emergency clause in it. There's not an emergency clause on this one.
No, I don't see.
Oh, I'm reading the other one, I'm sorry. Then, never mind.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next would be, these would be resolutions on pages 9, 11, 13, and 14. You can probably have one motion for all of those unless there's somebody that wanted to specifically talk about one of those resolutions.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions shown on pages 9, 11, 13, and 14.
Second.
Okay, can you read a general statement that will cover all those ordinances?
Well, we can. So they're actually revising connection charges for water connections of unassessed properties in the City of Albany. That would be Resolution 9. Resolution 11 is the connection charges for sewer connections of unassessed properties. 13 would be connection charges for storm connections of unassessed properties. And the last one would be connection charges for street connections to improve streets of unassessed properties in the city.
So those could probably be read into the reading of the ordinance.
The resolutions.
Yeah, the resolutions. Yeah, okay. So the motion was for approving all four resolutions, and there was a second. Any more discussion?
Well, we're going to read them, not approve.
The resolutions, not ordinance.
Oh, the resolutions, oh, okay. Pardon me. I was thinking they were ordinances.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Same motion carried. Thank you, Stacy. Okay, next is business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening? Yes, Lisa?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Grotto with the Albany Downtown Association, and I just wanted to bring to your attention that we have had a lovely holiday season starting out, and wanted once again to thank the city for all their support, the twice around parade and tree lighting. Couldn't have happened without the support of the city, from the Fire Department and Public Works to the Police Department during the night of the event, to make sure everybody's safe in the parade route. Appreciate Mayor Kenopa, your attendance, and assisting a bunch of local youth in lighting the tree, and the Fire Department's beautiful fire truck that presented Santa to the location as well to delight lots of kids. So it was a wonderful event, and I thank you all for attending and participating at different levels, and supporting the team downtown in doing that as well. I also want to bring to your attention that on Friday night is a First Friday event that is Gallery Cala Puya, and the trolley will be riding, and there will be a few carolers from West Albany High School to add a little cheer. And then also on Saturday is our free holiday movie, and it's A Wonderful Life. We do ask donations for the Salvation Army in the form of canned food, and that will be at the Dix Theater. So just wanted to let you know, there's lots going on downtown. There's also parlor tours, and caroling on horse-drawn carriage, and the Carousel has events. So please look to our calendar and the Visitor Association calendar to keep your holidays merry and enjoy our small-town Hallmark-type environment. Thank you so much.
And thanks to you, too, Lisa, and your volunteers, for everything just going so perfectly at the parade. And then the, we never did, we were over kind of by the post office, and Lisa didn't know what was the hang-up, because all of a sudden we had about a 20-minute lull, and that was where somebody's trailer got stuck on railroad tracks.
Yeah, the special one got stuck on the railroad tracks, but some other people came to their aid in the Dix Theater, and off we went.
I couldn't believe that, yeah.
Team effort.
And then I think Rebecca, I think it's supposed to rain is the forecast for Sunday's parlor tour. So we're going to hope that it doesn't rain during the parlor tour, but that's a great event, too. But so thank you, both of you, for all you do, for all the great events we have in Albany. So, thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right. Next, this one is the carryover, sort of the first reading of the ordinance, and this one's over accessory dwelling units. And Sean, you were going to say a few words on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As most of y'all may know by now, at our last meeting, we had a public hearing on the accessory dwelling units and took testimony. We closed the public hearing, and then after that, we did a procedural error, where we made a motion to approve an ordinance, and we voted on that ordinance without reading the ordinance, which is required by our laws. So tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to go back to where we were, which is we've closed the public hearing. You should not be receiving any additional testimony on the accessory dwelling units. So if there's, and I do know today there was an email that sent out that everybody received, but I think that at this point, it was told to not read it, and so that everybody wants to declare ex parte communication on that particular email. Other than that, what we would do tonight, you have two options before you. One would be to go back and do a motion to approve the ordinance, and have the ordinance read a first time that was made last time by, I believe it was Ray who made that motion. The other option would be to discuss and deliberate between the two ordinances, and direct staff to come back with some type of a hybrid of either one of those two ordinances. I don't think we're really required to do it, but Ray has said that he would like to undo or make a motion to repeal his original motion, so that we would have that opportunity to do that tonight, to discuss it if the council wants to. And again, they don't have to. The council could go right back to, take a vote on the original ordinance that was motioned before, so.
Well, just to clear the table, to get us back to square one again, I'll move or remove the original motion that I made, so we can start from fresh. And so it's, everybody's up to snuff on everything, so.
And then I believe David.
He's coming down the stairs.
There he is. And David is here. He was the one who presented, did the presentation last time. He'll be here to answer any questions that we can, you have from staff.
So that was a motion to remove the original.
That was a motion to remove my original mail that got us filed up.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, just to clarify.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? Clarification over. Yeah, Dick?
So I am a little bit, not confused, I guess, but I'd like to clarify. Somebody is going to come back with a modified motion?
That's an option that the council has tonight. The council can vote on the original, either ordinances before you tonight. There are two ordinances proposed that are out there tonight you could vote on. Either one of those, or direct staff to come back with some type of a hybrid of those after deliberations.
Okay, any more?
And so what's Ray's motion?
Yeah.
I'm pulling back the one that we did last month. It got us into this little kerfuffle.
Kind of rescind that.
So it's just nullifying. Just rescinding it, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Rescind that motion. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
And that's just a motion, not an ordinance.
Right. That's just rescinding, so now we're back to square one.
Right.
So, so Councillor, which there is the original ordinance, but there was also, you know, wanting to be able to still, I'm still feel very strong, and I know other couple councillors are also feeling very strong, about having the, well, for one thing, we don't like having ADUs, but we're having to make sure that we have it, you know, to be in compliance of state law, but to also keep our original owner occupied and some of the original standards that we have in our original ordinance, which would be owner occupied, and also requiring one off-street parking space for an ADU, and the existing square footage that we have for our existing code on that.
So if it passes, you'll just veto it?
It's either that or we can.
If it passes in its original form?
The minimum standards, support the minimum standards on that.
Well.
But not the modified version, unless we want to just table this and hold it over till next month.
Well, until, until you're willing to, you know, modify, others are willing to modify, I see no reason for us to waste the time of staff and run through this and do it again. I just, we have to just put this off until, until you come up with a plan. I mean, because it's, we were in compliance with what we did, even if we didn't get it all done. We were in compliance with state law. You decided you needed to change that. So I think it's now your job to come back to us and say, here's what you'll come up with, something that is not my way or the highway. I mean, that's kind of what I hear when, well, you have to have this, and this, and this, which is exactly only what you want. Four votes, two-thirds of the council says, you know, we came with two, at two separate times. One was the first with, and then the second came back with a small change. Okay, we did it twice, in good faith. You don't like it? Okay, well, come up with something that we like.
So I do want to kind of clarify something. This is not just me. We do, you do have a couple more councillors.
Well, there are two councillors who said, and there are four councillors who said the other thing. Normally, that passes. It is you who decided you needed to change it. Okay, that's the way the rules are. But this is now on you. Okay, that's the way the rules are. But this is now on you, as far as I'm concerned.
So, and it's not so much me, it's like what's.
Well, you're the ones that, you're the one who vetoed it.
I forgot the mayor to say what you're honest to say.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Because I've heard from so many, so many people that are just adamantly opposed to these ADUs. And most people don't, you walk down the street and ask somebody, what's an ADU? Or what's an accessory dwelling unit? They're not gonna know. What caught their attention when I did veto it, then they read the article, and I have heard from so many people, and many people that all of us here know too, that don't want to come out publicly, that are very adamantly opposed to any ADU. So we're coming up with what's gonna be sort of a fit in the community, and to be able to try to be able to minimize the impacts of ADU. They might not be a problem. In the future, it can always be changed. But this was kind of shoved on us from the state, that we were to have this in our code, so let's go with the minimum standards. There's still citizens that don't want them at all, but we have to have something in, but let's go with the bare minimum.
And there were 400 realtors who said, no, you're wrong.
Yeah, and I've heard from many people who want them also.
There's somebody who knows a little bit about.
I'd love to see that list of the 400 realtors, because I know darn well there's a lot of them that would not.
Realtors?
Yes.
She came here and she represents 400 of them.
She represents 400, but did 400 of them vote? Or they're just representing them.
She said they did. I take her at her word.
But the only thing is that time, well, but they do have a special interest on it, and.
Yeah, coming up with housing.
Well, not, they don't come up with housing, they're selling the housing.
Yeah.
I'm looking out for people that are living in their homes, neighborhoods. That's the most important, so.
Mayor, we're trying to solve homelessness, so isn't this a path to help increase the housing for less fortunate individuals, or you don't think that that applies? Furthermore, it went through the Planning Commission twice and passed there twice. So there's two votes there. Then there's, tonight, if it's voted on and passes by four, and you veto it, that's four times where two different organizations, the Planning Commission and the City Council, passed it and you vetoed it, okay? So I don't, in this thing that there's a lot of people that you've talked to, said they're against ADUs, doesn't hold water to me unless they're willing to come into this forum when we're discussing this, and put their name in front of everybody and say, I disagree with it. So until they're willing to stand up to the podium and stand up to me, I can't, I can't take that as verbatim for somebody that doesn't want to, want to stand up and hit the ball. So I can't agree with that.
There is two people here that wanted to speak, and I said there's no public hearing on it, so.
That's irrelevant, Mayor. It's irrelevant.
So I want to address the affordable housing piece you're thinking about.
Oh, I'm sure you do, Mayor.
So council, with all due respect, I do have, it's just as much right as you to be able to voice my opinion.
I understand.
So, but in a respectful manner. So when it comes to affordable housing, and if it's gonna be somebody that is needing affordable housing in a HUD voucher, do you really think somebody that's gonna be wanting to put an ADU in their backyard is going to be wanting to have a HUD voucher? They could, all they have to do is put that rent about 10 bucks or 25 bucks above the cap of a housing voucher to prevent anybody that's low-income to come in their backyard. So there's no guarantee that ADUs are going to be providing affordable housing. There's no guarantee to that. But what it could do by not having to be owner occupied is transforming, your neighbor could put in a rental and have two rentals next to you. That's gonna impact existing neighborhoods. If the state said that ADUs are demanding that cities have them and wanted to do it for any new subdivision from here on out, that's fine. People buying into that subdivision would know that that's something that they could be having next door to them, but it's not fair to existing neighborhoods to transform them from single-family into multifamily on that. So Ray?
First point is, again, I haven't seen any demand for ADUs that would construe to the ramifications you're talking about. But more importantly, recently, there was an editorial in the D H that talked about the population growth in the community, that even just at 1%, 1.2% or something like that, doesn't sound like much, but when you extrapolate that over the next generation, you're gonna have a huge number of people that are coming into the community that are going to have to have housing somewhere in the urban growth boundary. So do we do concentrated infill somehow? ADUs could be a tool that would allow for that. I just don't perceive that there is a, a case has not been made to me that there's going to be detrimental impact from having an ADU. I tried to craft a compromise that went nowhere, so we're back to square one again, and so here we are.
Have any of you guys ever lived in a slum area?
What does that have to do with the price of tea in Chinatown?
He's asking a question.
I'm answering the question.
The reason I ask is because I've lived in a neighborhood where some of you, including you, Mr. Sykes, referred to it as a slum back in the day. Yes, you did one time.
Saying what?
It was close to it, coming from a slum.
Don't put words in my mouth there. Please don't.
Just a sec.
You said it. I disagreed with you, but you said it. Some people think, some people still think the area where I live is slum-like, and particularly on the east side. And I've talked to people, in fact, a friend of mine, he lived in a upstairs downtown, and he thought, you know, I'm married, I've got kids now. I would, I really do need to live in a house. And I said, well, you know, over on the east of Lyon, there's a bunch of buildings, a bunch of houses over there. That was some effort and some fixing up. Those would really be deep places to live. They got decent-sized yards. It's, they're nice, big houses. They're historic houses. They're interesting architecture. Well, no, he said that's, it's too rough over there for me. It's kind of, it's kind of a slummy kind of area. And he bought a house out, Market Row, where you live. And I was disappointed, but now I see it fixing up over there, and people celebrating, well, in my neighborhood still. Got a house that's down at the heel, and there's been a rental. It gets fixed up, and our neighborhood celebrates that fact. And now you want to put shacks in the backyard, that's gonna drive it back to Baltic Family's less desirable place to live. And I really resent our planners pushing that as hard as they can do it. And as far as it's not going to happen, it's just going to be just fine. As we speak, our Landmarks Committee is talking about someone who wants to build one over here on the east side, an ADU. The address is 636 Third Street, and I drove by there today. And it's one of the few houses over there on the east side that looks to be a derelict house. The yard hasn't been taken care of for a year or two, by the looks of it. There's no cars parked in front of it. There's a garage in the back that's, now got some remnants of junk. I didn't get out and actually inspect the yard or the house, but from what I could see from the street, down at the heel. And I'll bet you dimes to a donut that's not a homeowner that owns that house. I'll bet it's somebody that's looking to skin a fat cat and get another unit he can rent in the backyard. So that's why I'm against these, these big, non-property-owned ADUs. I think they're just a real step in the wrong direction.
Mayor?
And I'm encouraging the mayor to veto anything that doesn't have the property owner as the owner of the main house.
Okay, Rich?
Standard for ADUs have to go through planning. They have to go through. It has nothing to do with, you don't make shacks.
My faith in the planning department is about that big.
Excuse me?
Dick, hang on.
You don't build a shack. That isn't what happens. That's why we have building divisions, et cetera. That just doesn't happen. And the other point that you made, Mayor, that there were a whole lot of people who had talked to you. I guess I'd point out to you that the folks, the lady who came here and said there were 400 realtors, that you said that, well, you didn't hear them, that they didn't vote on anything. We didn't hear, no one heard the people that talked to you either. I mean, you have to take things at least on the faith of the people that tell you it happened. That's all I can say.
And that's fine, but I have, what I'm hearing is I have not heard any support, unless it's more of somebody with a special interest group, that is in support of ADUs. I have not, I've heard from a few that want ADUs that are in, that live in a rental, but nobody that lives in any of our neighborhoods have come to me to say they want ADUs.
Well, that is in fact a special interest group, isn't it?
Well, no.
The people, the people who don't want them, don't want them in their neighbor's backyard? That's a group of people that don't like the idea of them, just like the others who do want them. They do like the idea of them.
Well, I look at special interest group as a group of people. I don't look at individual houses as a group of people.
Sharon, you may have, you may have lent credence to my original presumption that there wasn't going to be an overwhelming demand for them. If you have a lot of the folks that are in those neighborhoods say they're not interested in doing them, so we could have it wide open, you could make it any size you want, they're still not going to happen, because these people don't want them, so they wouldn't be considered for them.
Because currently, there's still, it's still owner occupied. That's why you haven't seen very many of them. But if you open up the door to not be owner occupied, then you're gonna have somebody, could be, might not be any, it could be a whole, a whole bunch of people wanting to buy a house and adding another house in the backyard.
I don't think they could pencil it out for the rent to make it pay for itself, but.
Well, and, but if they're doing it up in Portland area, then it's gotta be.
They're not. That's the problem. They can't even, they're giving them away for SDCs. They still can't get people to apply for them.
Yeah, well, but then the article that you sent me showing about how many ADUs were built, that was the biggest area that the ADUs are going in.
2,600 out of a population of 650,000. That's not even a fly speck.
Right, but it's, that's still, you know, quite a bit. And then, but adding them as, make, you know, allowing them as rentals, you don't know. It's just sort of unknown, it's that unknown, so.
Okay.
So what I would request then, if we can come back at our next meeting with the two separate formal ordinances, we have to have a formal ordinance for anything to be able to adopt, so if we can have two separate formal ordinance readings. But these aren't the, this is the original one from.
This is the original. This is the second one. That was the other option, move it or not tonight.
Uh-huh, for that. So do you want to have a first reading tonight, or wait till next month?
Well, no. I'd rather not have a first reading.
I would.
I'd rather come back with something we can.
Well, it's gotta be unanimous, or it's not.
I know.
It doesn't have to be unanimous.
Staff, I need some direction about what to come back with in terms of a compromise.
Do you want a first reading on the minimum standards?
No.
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 Bill?
I think Rich made a good comment that maybe the ball's in your court. Come back after the first year with the proposed ordinance, and let's discuss that one and vote on it, and see where that takes us.
Okay, you want to do that? Okay, we'll bring this back next month on that, so, okay.
I guess I'm not understanding. I mean, no matter what, four counselors, which is a majority, have voted one way, and.
Twice.
Twice. And it just seems like that this is kind of messing with the democracy that we have. You know, four against two, three against three, no problem, the mayor makes a decision. But four against two, twice, planning commission, twice. I don't understand what the problem is. I mean, just because you don't like it, Mayor, there is a majority that do, and I just, I just think it's wrong to use the veto like this. I think it's playing games, because I don't think you're gonna come up with anything that four want. I mean.
Well, I think I just look at, I'm looking out to me for the community, and my heart's into it.
Anything we're not?
I just think we have a different view on it.
Well, exactly, but that's the thing. We all have different views. There are seven views on this council. Six of them make the decisions. Four said yes, two said no. That's the whole thing. I mean, to me, that is the bottom line. And just because, I mean, I don't like a lot of, I mean, a lot of times in the votes and stuff, used to be, you know, counsel two, bestie none, because I didn't agree. But you accept it and you go on. And so I just think it's not the right thing to use the power this way. I just don't like the, I don't think that a veto should be in our.
Well, maybe three times a charm.
You know, we operate with a set of rules.
Yeah, we do.
We do, yes, part of that. It's kind of like a chess game. There's the different players, the different chess pieces have rules that they abide by. And the queen has the best of all rules. She can go all over the place, she's not. And the queen, the mayor here, has the special rule that she can veto, he or she can veto something she doesn't like. And I think it's a really good rule. You can keep the queen, the mayor, pardon me, that can keep things from happening that are unfortunate, and if she can get the support of two of the pawns.
Kind of like counselors not attending meetings so that they can play with the vote?
It's one of the rules, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you got a good memory, Jessica.
Yes, I do. Yep, I'm done.
And I do remember years back, we did have a zone, a zone change that took place, and it was North Albany, and it was, can't remember which commercial, and a new counselor came on board and overran that council's vote, so it does happen.
Is that what you're waiting for? You think the new counselor's gonna?
No, Bessie, I'm saying, do you remember that, when you did that years back? I do remember that one, so, years ago, that was the North Albany commercial. So we can, it's kind of part of the rules. It can, you know, it can be done, so. But, so I think we'll bring, we'll bring back an ordinance for the next meeting then on that.
Can you give me an idea of what kind of an ordinance you'd be coming back with?
So it'll be probably something in between that state minimum and the one that was passed. So have a compromise.
That's what we're needing.
So, okay, all right. That's it on this agenda item. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. And if there isn't any items that needs to be pulled off this evening for discussion, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to pull off item 2A.
2A, okay.
Oh, thank you.
And anything else?
Yeah, what page is that on?
56 to 71.
56 to 71. So is there a motion, though, for the consent calendar?
I'll move for the option of the consent calendar, removing 2A.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, 2A, and that's on.
That's the canvassing of the votes, and it struck me as I was looking through all the pages that came from Lynn County, when you get back to the individual positions, mayor, counselor, et cetera, et cetera, every one of them, the column that says registered voters, it doesn't have the correct total. They've only pulled the very last item off of precinct, the last precinct in the list, and they've put that down as the total. So I don't know if that invalidates those, or.
Well, what I thought was interesting is like on page 50.
See, they're not, these aren't even numbered, so.
I never did go to page 71.
It said City Council, City of Adair Village. It said city council, city of Adair Village, did you notice that up on the top?
Yeah, they're not even, yeah, they're not even in our, yeah.
Whole bunch of other places.
Oh, I see, my page is cut off.
Well, yeah, on the one for, it says mayor, on the second column, it says registered voters, go down to the bottom, it shows precinct 107, it says thirteen fifty, and then for the total for that column, it still says thirteen fifty, and it shouldn't, every one of the individual offices have the wrong total for that column, and I don't know if that's just obviously a little computer glitch, I don't think it, it doesn't change the...
Ray, which page are you on?
I don't know if you're getting a whole page, I'm only getting...
Each one of the different offices?
When, when we accept this, are we accepting the numbers or are we accepting the outcome?
Definitely.
I think if we're, what we're doing is accepting the outcome, we don't have a problem. I mean, if that's different, I guess I would ask the legal counsel to say.
I think it's because these numbers actually will always change, if you notice, even like within a month, you might get some ballots or they're...
Provisional ballots.
Yeah, these numbers do change.
Yeah, I think we're accepting the outcome, this could be election, it's over.
I move to approve the outcome.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, yeah, good question, probably Mary might check in on that, Ray.
Who was the second?
Bessie.
Thank you.
Award of contract, this would be to Willamette Valley Rehabilitation Center for janitorial services at the police department, and Diana, hello, in chief.
If we could just get the police not to dirty that place up so much.
It's brand new.
Or you get it cheaper.
Can't be dirty yet.
So, we're here seeking adoption of a resolution that will award Willamette Valley Rehabilitation Center a contract for janitorial services at our department, and authorizing the police to sign the contract. Our current contract expires at the end of December, we've been using Al's Janitorial and that's going to expire at the end of this month. So, we've received two proposals for qualified rehabilitation facilities, one from Garten Industries located in Salem, and one from WVRC, which is in Lebanon, and we are going with WVRC because they are most cost-effective and they have great references.
Okay.
When you said that they're most cost-effective, are they the low bidder?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's, and that's who we use for the city, isn't it, the whole thing?
That's the current contract for the city.
Okay, that's what I thought, just to make sure.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, council, you do have a resolution on page eighty.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, motion carried, all right, thank you. Okay, next is reports, and I'll go ahead and move Republic Services up to, from two to before number one, if that's okay with Mark in the back, you're probably here for the hydro power, is that okay to wait for us to do, or Chris, okay, and so, Julie?
Good evening, I'm Julie Jackson, this is our controller, Dan Strandy, he's here tonight, so I think he can probably answer some more technical questions that you may have, and really, Dan has prepared a document that I've given to Marilyn to hand out to you, it talks about the refuse rate index and the history, and gives you a little more information than I probably gave you the other night, so, if you'll indulge us, I would let Dan just give you the basics of that, and then we're just here at your request.
Perhaps it makes most sense to go back in time and beginning of the refuse index about seven years ago, and why we chose to implement this, this particular index, the architecture behind it and the theory behind it was to eliminate those large spikes in rate increases that we historically experienced in this industry, and instead make a more methodical approach to a sustainable rate structure, where it doesn't have those large increases, while at the same time maintaining a stable probability for the company, the company doesn't see these peak values. So, we implemented this, this index in 2011, the first implementation was 2013, we're now seven years into the, into the index, and it has thus far done exactly as the architecture back in the time design, and that was to stabilize the possibility to have a maximum of ten percent, but to, but also to stabilize the rate, so over the seven-year period, we averaged 2.3 percent, we've seen two years with, with virtually zero, and in this particular year, we see a little bit higher, in fact, it's the highest the index has ever been at 5.7, and the reason behind that is what has happened with fuel, the two years in which we had zero or 0.3 back in 2016 and 2017, you can see where the fuel index plummeted, it fell 24 percent, then another 11 percent following here, we enjoyed low fuel prices for several years, that over the last year and a half has changed, and you see the fuel index has reversed and has returned to what it was about four years ago with a 35 percent increase. Now, the fuel index over that seven-year period has averaged to 0.2 percent, or it's virtually flat, but it did fall and it came back, and it's that increase that we've experienced that is driving 5.7, but it is just merely a reversal of what we experienced three to four years ago when it was back to back zeros. The, the index has kept rates for the last seven years, avoiding those large increases. Those large increases still exist in the industry, they're actually quite commonplace, you can see what's being implemented in other cities in the northwest, you're going to see several digits, 10, 15, 20 percent, up in Marion County and in Salem, and even here in Lynn County, the county had 10 to 15 percent increase last summer. This index over seven years eliminated that, it kept the rates relatively stable, with only small increases, while at the same time keeping the profitability of the company stable. In fact, the seven years, we've, we've obviously, we're speaking of 2018, we have five years of history of year ends in which the average margin is 8.3 percent, meaning for every dollar of revenue, 8.3 cents of profit, it's the highest at 8.7 in 2013, 2014, or the lowest in 2015, 16, 17, 17.9, so, the average of 8.3, it has never deviated more than 0.4 percent above or below that, so it's accomplished the desire to stabilize profits while also keeping those, those increases at a minimum and never experiencing those large, relevant increases. So, that's kind of the history behind the index, it also supports the effectiveness of the index, and in fact, the index over its seven years has averaged just 0.3 percent, which is a very typical inflationary type of number.
Okay, all right.
Is that fuel index, is that average over a year, or is that a specific month?
So, all of the indexes are looking at June or June, the reason being we need to prepare this in the second half of the year for a better presentation, so it's June 30th to June 30th, so the mid-year CPS is where the major index is.
I only fill my car about once a month, so I don't really keep much track of it.
We have to put a little bit more in our truck than that.
I liken it to the same process that customers can apply for through power to balance their monthly bills by averaging it, and that minimizes the, the real serious ups and downs, which do happen on occasion, not everybody chooses to participate in that program, but I have no problem with how your methodology works, and I do thank you for the update on the insurance question that was asked.
Sure. I would also add that this methodology was not just created by us, I think it was a process that was worked out between, I think Dan was involved with the process, and Mike Hype, some of you remember Mike, and Kevin Hines, and then from the city, it was Jim Delaporte, who was then city attorney, and Steve Bryant, who worked out the details of this, and I believe that the resolution was actually written by Jim Delaporte, so, you know, that's kind of the history, and we can answer questions if you have them, I feel like there's more to come. I think actually Julie was, what, 2011, since we've had the resolution?
Yeah, June, I think it was June 2011.
That would have been Wes Hare.
Yeah.
Oh, it was Wes, well, I think, I think it began with, they started talking about it with Steve, and then moved to, to, to...
I've been on through to Wes, yeah.
Thanks, Sharon. So, council, so what you'll need to do tonight is just authorize the rate adjustment, it's, it's in our, in the resolution, and we're, you know, bound to want to follow the resolution, it's if you want anything modified, that would really need to go for their next request or get something modified before the next rate increase request.
There is, there was the request to change the requirements, even though they show that there's more than, more than what the requirement is, the insurance requirement, can that not be changed for the new contract?
That could be done, or, I don't think, did we have it down, is that, that was a minimum they had to have?
Right, that was the minimum they had to have, you can amend, if both parties are willing to, they can enter into an amendment of a contract, and to say that the minimum is now going to be what you currently carry, I think it's a three, five, is what I looked at at the day, three million, five million, as opposed to the 100, 300,000, if, if that's what...
Well, I, I would think that that, if what you have in there is a, is a 20-year-old number, probably, it ought to be updated, I mean, before whatever is signed, and I don't think that's a, a big deal.
Yeah, we have no problem amending that to the current amount we carry, we're not going to reduce that one way.
I guess with that change, I would, I would move to authorize the...
Rate adjustment.
Rate adjustment.
Second.
All right, so the motion would be to authorize a rate adjustment, and by also amending the contract, that changes the, that raises up the minimum insurance requirement.
To what they're showing us on the...
Yeah, to what was part of the handout.
And then we can add that document yearly when we bring you a report, so you can see what the certificate shows.
Yeah, okay, questions, there's motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, I think this one, no, so, all right, okay.
One more item I wanted to bring up and just address, after the meeting on Monday, we talked about these documents being six months old by the time you get them, one of the things we would really propose, and that we do in a lot of other communities, is that we get the annual report to you right after the first quarter of the year, so we would present the annual report in April and get that information to you, I think the, for some reason, we kept bringing it with the refuse rate information in the end of August or early September, but I think it makes a lot more sense to get you that information while it's more relevant, up shortly after the year end, so if you'd like us to do that, we can present that in April, we think that's a doable number for us.
Okay, okay, all right.
So, you'd like us to do that, or would you like to talk about it?
Yeah, I think it'd be good for the council to see that.
Great, we'll put that into our notes then.
Okay.
You should have heard enough grunts, should have heard enough grunts, oh, okay.
I know, I wasn't paying attention to the grunts, sorry, thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Hydro power.
Okay, hydro power, Chris.
I did have one thing, Julie.
Julie.
Julie, I got one thing I just noticed on this, just for clarification, is this supposed to take effect on January 1, and the customers were notified already?
Customers had notes on their voice, if we start to...
Perfect, just making sure, I was just, I was just making sure, looking at the, the way the ordinance is written, so...
And then the other thing that we always do a holiday call black, and so we add that information typically on mass as well, so, so remember, because sometimes people get it wrong, it works on Christmas.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you for Republic Service, for all the great service you're providing the community, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, so, we wanted to provide an update on the work we're doing to try to find a better path for the hydropower program. As you'll remember, we came to the council some time ago to get permission to start working on a different way to authorize the hydropower facility. Currently, we have a, what's called a minor power license through FERC, and that license gives FERC jurisdiction over the entire length of what they call the project, which starts at the diversion dam outside Lebanon, and runs all the way through to where the water leaves, the hydropower generator here in town, and over time, the requirements placed on us by FERC have expanded such that we're spending more on studies and, and work along the canal than we're making in revenue. So, our request way back when was to try to pursue what's called a conduit exemption, which would require us to give up our license and apply for this conduit exemption, it shrinks the footprint of the project to just the hydropower facility, where the water leaves the canal, goes to the generator, and then goes back to the river, so that would relieve us from many of the regulatory burdens that FERC places on us through the license. One of the requests from the headquarters FERC people, when we talked to them about this, was that we set up a process by which the requirements, current requirements for, regarding fisheries resources in particular, but also cultural resources, are maintained. Currently, the fisheries resources appear in the license as written requirements, and we're meeting all those requirements, but when the license goes away, there is no longer a written requirement for us to do these things, this includes things like maintaining the fish ladder, we halt the diversion of flow for hydropower when the Saniam River is below a certain flow, there's a, a number of things, none of which are especially onerous or difficult or expensive, and we're, we're happy to continue doing those things. So, what we've been working on the last many months is trying to get to an agreement with several, an alphabet soup of resource agencies, which we're making good progress on. The reason we're here tonight is to update you that we are making progress, it's slow but steady, and to verify again that we're on the right path, and that, and to request authorization to continue to expend funds. Previously, you had approved $90,000, it's been over two fiscal years, we've fully either expended or encumbered that $90,000, and we don't anticipate this work effort ending until probably, well, I don't know when it'll end, we anticipate submitting our applications in the spring of 2019 to FERC. We still have some work left to do to get to a memorandum of understanding with the fisheries agencies, we have a draft out that they're reviewing now, we also have to go through a process with the DEQ that should take, it's going to take at least a few months, so we anticipate needing to work through probably, at least through June, before we submit these applications. So, that's our path, and that's what we would like to continue doing, we, there, so far there have not been any major roadblocks, we don't anticipate that there will be, it just is taking a long time to get through the bureaucracy of it all. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Rich, and then Ray.
Would it be an easier path to deal with the fish ladder, diversion, that kind of thing, by virtue of our city water than the hydropower?
I'm not sure what... I'm not sure what, what you're referring to.
Because we're getting city water through that same, that same thing, and there would still have to be a fish ladder, there would still have to be, you know.
Yes, and, and, you know, that's sort of our point with the conduit exemption is, if the hydro power facility fell off into the river today, tomorrow, we would still need the canal for water, drinking water for the treatment plant. So we will still maintain all of that infrastructure because we need it to work, because we need the water. The other thing with the fisheries, the fish screen and the fish ladders is there's actually state law that says if you have these facilities, you're required to maintain them. So there is state law there. The problem is that the federal fisheries agencies, NIPS and US Fish and Wildlife Service, right now, it's convenient for them because there's a direct method. If we don't do what they've asked us to do in the license, they can directly affect the city. They go to the FERC, they say the city's not living up to its license requirements, and we get a slap from FERC. When the license goes away, we had to define a new process essentially for them to feel comfortable with an enforcement mechanism, that if we stop doing this work, they have a way to make us start doing it again. So essentially, what we've done is developed an MOU, which has language that talks, has an enforcement mechanism that uses language like through a court of competent jurisdiction, that sort of thing, which is language that they're familiar with.
Or, in other words, no.
In other words.
Wouldn't it be easier, well, no.
No, there's really not a, there's not a mechanism through the use of water for drinking water for the fisheries agencies to.
Yeah, no.
Stop us, yeah.
So do you have two different organizations coming down on you with rules about the fish?
Seven.
Oh, we have a bunch, yeah. So the MOU is between the city and US Fish and Wildlife Service, NIPS, National Marine Fisheries Service, ODFW, DEQ, SHPO, and the Grand Rod Tribe. So we have to get all of those people's comments and.
So if either the drinking water or the power went away, would any of those regulatory people go away?
Well, if the power facility went away, then we would have no nexus for the fisheries people. We would, I think, still have to, Mark's probably going to come up and correct me.
To surrender our hydro power license, that process, they would still require us to meet those conditions.
You still have to have a fish ladder, wouldn't you?
Yes.
Screen.
And there's state law that requires us to maintain those things. Any federal action gives, because we have listed species under the Endangered Species Act, any federal action gives the federal fisheries agencies the opportunity to comment. The FERC is required to consult with them, is the official language, and FERC doesn't want to consult with them, they'd rather we do it. So that's what we're doing essentially.
We've got to keep the bureaucrats in business.
If we can get them to agree, we're in good shape, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a very well-written report as to all the little minutia things that you have to go through, and the fact that you've expended the original budget was, was basically out of your control for the timeframe because of things happened. You've got it in your budget already for the adequate funds to continue it to the fruition. I think we should automatically say, yeah, let's make it done. You're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not afraid.
Right, it's not very far away now.
Okay, counsel, did you want to kind of give the go-ahead to?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Great, thank you.
All right, do you need a motion or not?
No, just head nods, the money's already okay to be expended.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. Okay, that's it for business tonight, and business from the council, anything, Bessie?
No, nothing.
Bill?
Dick?
My printed agenda, some of the pages slip off to the side of the printer or something, they don't get numbers on them, and part of the data's missing, so. That didn't used to happen when you printed everybody, I don't know if I'm getting discriminated, I'm going to claim old age discrimination.
Is that it?
It's gotten old.
Okay, all right, Rich?
Yeah.
Hey, Ray?
I'd like to compliment Chief of Police and his staff. I was in an accident on Saturday, and it just happened to be that the, there was an officer, probably about five feet away from where the accident occurred.
Wow.
Cody Lowery, and she had us just drive up into a parking lot, it was a fender bender. Nobody was injured, no car, all, all the vehicles were just, they were drivable. And was very exemplary in her demeanor and professionalism, and it was a very pleasant interaction that I had with her. So I wanted to compliment the chief on having a high qualified staff.
Wonderful, so which sob were you in?
The little red one.
Okay, so wasn't your newly painted, the blue one?
No.
Yeah, oh my gosh, wow, so, yeah, and everything was okay?
There's extensive damage on the front end, but everything's okay. It was my first vehicular accident in which I was behind the steering wheel.
Wow, yeah.
It's a wake-up call.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was ours too, four and a half months ago. Yeah, won't ever forget that one, but, yeah.
Mine was nowhere near extensive as yours. We can drive our cars away.
Yeah, well, thank goodness, I'm so glad you were okay, so, yeah, but, wow. Okay, and again, we have just really enjoyed working with you, Ray.
My pleasure.
But we're going to keep you busy too, so, yes. Okay, Mike?
I just want to make sure that the record's clear that Dick accused me of calling a portion of this city a slum, and that's never happened. And in fact, my paper route when I was fourteen, twelve and thirteen, was in that area, was in that neighborhood. So I've lived in this town for fifty years, and I've never referred to any portion of this city as a slum. And I just want to make sure that that's on the record and made very clear.
Well, I'm glad that's your opinion.
Okay, and I did not have anything this evening, but did want to remind everybody about our parlor tour is this weekend, and there's a lot of events going on too. Carousel has a lot of events, and still Storybook Land is still going, and there's a lot to do, so nobody can get bored this holiday season, so in all the need, but, Peter?
Yes, I'd like to, on behalf of the staff, thank Ray as well, and for his thoughtful and considerate review of everything, and it's been a real pleasure for me to work with him, and I think the rest of the staff would echo that. I do have one small thing that actually Jorge will address about LED lights.
Before I talk about the LED lights project, I want to also mention, there was a, I brought again the issue with the microphones, want to let counsel know that Michael has made initial contact with the audio vendor, and we're going to be, or he's going to be looking into trying to find a solution or improve somehow the wireless microphones.
Okay, oh, good. And also, so Jorge, or Hasso listens by, like a receiver?
Yeah.
I'm from the city of Albany, and I appreciate it very much.
Well, would that help Dick?
Yeah.
It probably would.
Yeah.
We have spares.
Well, I'm going to go get new hearing aids next week.
Oh, okay, he's getting new hearing aids.
See how they work.
But so in case he ever forgets them at home for council meeting, maybe something like that, yeah.
Yeah, these are from the city.
Yeah, but it works well?
It works well, yes.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
This is not a Verizon, a Verizon phone commercial, right?
What does it do? Is it a hesitation at all, or delay?
This system works well. If you're talking about microphones and all, I mean, the whole audio setup in this room, I think needs a lot of the desire.
I think you're right.
When you're trying to listen, as I often do, apologize for dragging the sound, as I often do to the, to the audio recordings of council meetings, or the work sessions, or other committee meetings, they're almost inaudible. I mean, there's a lot of noise. Every time somebody touches a piece of paper, or hits a table, or moves, and all the screeching and all this kind of stuff going on, on the audio. Whereas the voices are usually received into the background for the fun, very well. And it seems to me as though if you're going to rely on audio tapes to be, to take the pleasure of minutes, as you do in some cases, I think it'd be worthwhile to invest in some audio equipment that actually records the voices and eliminates all the expanseous noises that, that you hear. I mean, microphones sitting on tables just don't do, they pick up every little scratch of the man from Republic Services, just kind of hitting the table with the microphone. And if anybody listened to that tape, it would be like a drum corps. So it would be, or the council's consideration sometimes, to be example about these microphones. When you're talking, they're set up, of course, for you to speak into them, but as the council table is arranged, when you, when you speak to each other, you don't turn to the microphone, you turn to somebody else. You speak past the microphone, and so the sound system, I think, could stand a little professional analysis from an audio person.
Yeah, good to know, yes, yep, so I agree. And I think even when I was listening in on with the phone, it was very difficult to hear around the dais when I was having to listen to it on the phone, but, yeah, so. Okay, Jorge?
So on the LED project, so Tom Valentino from, he's a supervisor in facility maintenance, was working with Mr. Howard Kell with, from EC, and Mr. Kell provided a lighting proposal to upgrade the lighting throughout City Hall to convert it to LED. The current lighting expense for City Hall on a yearly basis is about twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars a year, or close to nineteen hundred and fifty dollars a month. The total project that they're proposing is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, with the incentives from Energy Trust and BPA, it reduces the project by twenty-seven thousand five hundred, which makes the project at around one hundred and fifty-one thousand. The annual savings after, as I mentioned earlier, nineteen hundred and fifty-nine is the current lighting cost. Once you convert them to LED, the savings will be around seventeen hundred dollars a month, just to, the electrical bill for the lighting. Unfortunately, due to the, well, basically, we don't have the money to go and get the one hundred and fifty-one thousand to replace them, and we would need to, and they're willing to give us a loan to do that. But given the amendment in the city charter, chapter nine, section forty-four, we can't move forward with that, and unfortunately, I had to say we have to cancel the project for now. But I just want to make you aware that we were looking into providing more savings in terms of energy here in the City Hall, and due to this, and we don't have the money available from general fund, we'll have to go ahead and pause the project.
Fifty-some year, fifty-some year payoff.
Seven, no, seven point nine, seven.
Seventeen hundred dollar savings per month.
Per month.
Seven point forty-two year, seven point, seven years and a half.
Seven year payback.
The total cost is nineteen hundred dollars a month, the savings.
Is seventy.
It'll be seventeen hundred, so the bill will be like five, four hundred, four hundred bucks a month.
Question, ironically, I couldn't hear you.
I know.
Me neither.
What was preventing you from doing it? You said something about the charter?
Yeah, because it's, EC is willing to provide a loan to, for us to, and then take the savings and make the payments to the loan, but because there's an interest payment on it, given the charter amendment that was passed, that the city can't take any loans, we cannot move forward with this project, even though it's going to generate some significant savings.
I thought a part of our charter, though, was the loans, that we had a certain cap, though, in debt, long as we kept it under that cap.
Yeah, do you know, I think, oh, and Sean, we've read multiple times, yeah.
It doesn't, we, we can't do it.
Yeah.
Could we call this blight instead of bright?
I thought it was.
Well, is this going back to what Tom Cordier pushed through?
Yes, yes.
So we could if we went to a vote to the people.
Correct.
So to approve the City Hall and have LED lighting to save the taxpayers' money, we have to go to the voters for approval.
Yeah.
If it was in our budgetary process.
Then we can do it.
Then the funding could be budgeted, and it wouldn't be.
Yeah, correct. There's other, what could be other options, like, yeah, for example, from economic development, we can take a loan and just put the money, the payment, as long as the interest is internally, we, it doesn't violate that charter amendment.
So if one of these bulbs burns out, could you put in an LED bulb?
Yeah, we can put LED as the, but these, it's going to take a long time to replace.
So can you replace them as they burn out, or whatever?
Yes, the answer is yes.
And you wouldn't have to go to the voters then?
No, no, because the cost will be the normal maintenance that we paid to replace the bulbs.
So wouldn't that be a satisfactory way to do it?
Well, it will take a very long time to achieve the savings that I was talking about.
So, but, but counsel can authorize to have a loan, internal loan, then, done through our economic development fund, if you wanted to proceed with the project. That you can do. So, because it would, I mean, a seven year payback is pretty good, and then that's really reducing the overall electricity costs for this building.
Right.
So did you want to, is there a timeline or deadline that you need to respond on this for the Energy Trust?
There's no specific timeline, it's just that the incentives from Energy Trust continue to go down, so as we weigh more and more, we'll lose more incentives. Right now, they're at twenty-seven thousand. That would reduce the cost of the project.
Yeah.
I wonder if you could bring us a report on this, I'm missing about every third word, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email to counsel the report that we got from EC.
You have a report?
Yes, I have it.
So can we have this on the agenda then, our first one in January then?
Sure, yes, yeah.
And see about doing an internal loan?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, anything else? Peter?
Nothing else.
Okay, staff have anything else?
Yeah. Oh, Marilyn, a couple of things. Wanted to remind you that we have a work session scheduled for Monday, December seventeen. Bessie will not be here. Also wanted to remind you that we, the, going back to both the Legion proclamation and the homeless Memorial Day proclamation, the homeless memorial service will be at, at Elder Hackelman Park and the Legion this year, five thirty PM on Friday, December twenty-first, the shortest day of the year. And I wanted to give credit for, to Holly for doing the bulk of the writing for the proclamation this afternoon. I did the proofreading. I got credit that I didn't deserve, but Holly did the work and turned out a beautiful product in a short amount of time.
They had some wires got a little crossed, and I get an email this morning about wanting to videotape a speech for tonight, and I'm like, what, what is this? And then I was in back-to-back meetings, I couldn't get a hold of them, so finally, they got a hold of Holly and found out that it was going to be, they needed a proclamation, but they didn't have it in the regular written form. So Holly, you know, hurriedly put it together in Maryland, and by the time I got out of meetings, they had it all done, so, thank you.
Two other things, Peter might want to talk about, the panel discussion he's going to be a part of on Sunday.
Yeah, I did, I have mentioned it to a few of you, but on Sunday, the Human Relations Commission is having a last of their sponsored panels at First Christian Church, and they've asked if somebody from the city would participate. So I'll be there, it's at two o'clock on Sunday afternoon, talking about the city and what the city's done to enhance diversity, and any other topics that might be of interest to them. It's two o'clock on Sunday.
Is that coming Sunday?
Correct.
During the house tour.
Yep.
I'm scheduled at the Monteith House, I think also, hopefully not the museum, but, so I'll have to miss it.
Yeah, me too, so.
Also, the Community Development Commission's meeting on affordable housing in Albany is Tuesday, the eleventh, at five fifteen here in council chambers.
Okay, I'll be there too. All right, anything else? Okay, all right, so then our next meeting, we'll have that work session would be the seventeenth, you said. Is it still kind of tentative or is it definite?
It's definite.
It is then definite, okay. And then Monday, January seventh, and is a work session Wednesday, January ninth is our regular meeting. And with that, happy holidays, everyone, and we're adjourned.